Called meeting to order and if you would stand and then we'll ask Joey Ewes in the pledge. I'm Louisa and Craig.
Our gracious devil father, we thank you for this opportunity to gather together here this evening. We ask you, Lord, to go with us to this meeting and help us, Lord, to do the right thing, Lord, to teach us how to come to you, Lord, and help, Lord, that you will give us the answers and the questions that we need to talk about tonight. We ask you, Lord, to always guide and lead us, strengthen us, encourage us, Lord, to come to you for all our problems in Jesus' name, amen.
All right, I thank y'all visitors for coming to a special, your special announcement tonight. And we got a couple surprises and big checks from the governor. I wanted everybody to gather around, take a picture with. And but tonight I wanted to bring something to your attention. And I was going through the minutes a while back looking for some old stuff Beeper hadn't been digging up. And I went back to January nineteen eighty-one and run across some, and I wanted to read it to you. It was a regular meeting of Louise City Council was held Tuesday, January thirteenth nineteen eighty-one in the city hall. Prior to opening the meeting with the pledge of allegiance, I'm assuming now that we had the lesson tonight, Teddy Van Hooch, even though the minutes don't say it, swore in Elder Adams Jr. as city council attorney. Those present were councilwoman Ian Hall, I'm assuming deceased. Bill Jackson, who I thought was gonna make it, he might still get here. Councilman Jim Reynolds, deceased. Uh Homer Williams, deceased. Arden Grubb, deceased. And city clerk Judy Salisbury, deceased. And attorney Elder Adams. I wanted to read on just for the sake of some fun. Councilman Bill Jackson made the motion attorney Adams be appointed as the city's bond counselor. I'm not even sure what that is, all right? And the motion was seconded by Jim Reynolds, all voted favor. This was interesting to me. Mayor Van Hooch opened several bids for a new garbage truck. As y'all know, he just bought one last month. And a lengthy discussion took place concerning the bids. And councilwoman Nina Hall made the motion to accept the bid of manning equipment Louisville for thirty-three thousand five hundred and eight dollars. Minus ten thousand dollar trade-in for the old truck, making the purchase price twenty-three thousand five hundred and eight dollars. We just purchased one for a hundred and fifty-five thousand and eighty dollars. All were in favor. I thought this was interesting. Councilman Bill Jackson made the suggestion that all ordinances and resolutions be abolished. I was open, Bill, and me here. And start again from scratch with all new laws. I feel like that sometimes too. However, he further stated that he knew this was not possible. Perhaps it could be started as separate, but the ordinance and resolutions be kept within index. So it could easier, be easier to locate such laws when needed. The city clerk also was advised to issue a deadline for city stickers. As of January thirty-first thereafter, they're in decreed one dollar each month. And if a citation is issued, you must pay the current price of the sticker plus court costs. It was to add a dollar each month that you didn't get your sticker. I'll save you the rest of it, but I thought that was some interesting reading. And so Bud, we, I called these folks, people that you've worked with through the years to do just a little celebration of your, we kinda got our math wrong. I thought it was your fortieth anniversary. It's actually your forty-first. She just completed her fortieth year of serving as the city. And so we had, we got some little stuff for you. We wanted to recognize you for forty years of service.
I appreciate you.
For your service. I thought it would be nice to have all the previous mayors that you worked with living be here. So if you wanna come up and, we realize with COVID, we'll try to keep a distance. First of all, let's let Greg, you wanna do yours? Well, you got more than Christmas time here, Greg.
Bud, first, we just want to say congratulations on forty years of being with the city of Louisiana. And on behalf of the police department, we just want to say we really appreciate everything you've always done for us, helping us out, look up different laws and make sure we're staying square and fair. And we just want to give you this in appreciation.
Well, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Congratulations.
In fact, I'm coming to my funeral. All right, there it is. Eddie, you wanna go next?
Why, certainly.
We could read on about the fire department, but I left all that in.
Well, Bud, for all the years, I've been here since eighty-three, I'm getting close to yours. But thanks for all the things you've done for us. You've always been a asset for the fire department, taking care of us and make keep us out of trouble. So it's not a whole lot, but you know, you at least stay warm with it.
Well, thank you.
It's got your name on it. If my dog's attacking a morgue or a waffle, they might keep you warm too. I don't know. There you go, sir. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, Bud, and then from from me and the mayors, the, all the mayors, we did a proclamation that recognizes you for your fortieth year. It says, I hope I got some of this right, that you was born in July first nineteen forty-eight.
That's right.
In Louisiana, Kentucky. You attended Greenbrier Military Institute, University of Kentucky, and University College of Law. And that you've served the country honorably in the United States Air Force. And that you've been city attorney since January thirteenth nineteen eighty-one. And you've served the citizens for thirty, forty consecutive years. And so therefore, me and the mayors declare January thirteenth, twenty twenty-two as Bud Adams Day. Also, something I'd been wanting to do for a while is start a new award under my mayorship. For, you know, a lot of cities do key to the city. And I come up with this a while back, that while I'm mayor, I would like, and hopefully who represents me would carry it on. People who have done distinguished service for the city, that we would classify them as a gem of the big sandy. And I would like to start an award called the Gem of the Big Sandy Award for people from Louisiana. The, when they do things that need to be recognized, we can sign an executive order and declare them a gem of the big sandy. So Bud Adams is gonna be the first. Gem of the Big Sandy Award, and there's your plaque, Bud. And this is really special.
Oh, my.
This is a glass gem that says you are Gem of the Big Sandy.
Well, thank you. Still got maybe I'm coming to my funeral.
Yeah, this is the year, isn't it? All right, take that. Okay, and then Bud, this is, this was from me, just personally, for all the help you've done to me. I figure he cooks every now and then, surely. And so it's a cutting board with Louise on it. The, some of the other people throughout the town that I told about it, wanted to recognize you. And some of them, they couldn't be here tonight, but the Rotary Club sent you the certificate, making you. And also in here is letters from Kentucky Engineering Group and the Kentucky League of Cities President, Chan. He couldn't make it, but he sent this letter.
I certainly appreciate it.
All right, and Chris, you got something. I forgot about you. And then we're gonna take some pictures and talk this afternoon.
Harold did contact me the other day and asked me if I'd like to be here and presents you something from the county clerk's office. And on my way home this evening, I began to think, forty years is a long time. And but I've worked with you. March will make twenty-five years in the clerk's office. And I know when you do things with, for the city representing, whether it's waters or easements or transactions between the city and the county, we know that you do it right. And it's been a pleasure working with you. We congratulate you.
Well, thank you very much.
We have a letter here for the Secretary of State Adams. And I'll read it here. It says, Mr. Adams, it is a great pleasure to award you the highest honor this office can bestow. We present the Commonwealth Ambassador Award to the individuals who demonstrate exceptional character and citizenship through their contributions to the communities of our Commonwealth. Sincerely, Michael Adams, Secretary of Kentucky. And it'll come with a certificate. You can see a train suit, but I present that on behalf of the state.
All right.
And I got your cookies.
What I thought we'd do before we take some pics, I wanted to use this opportunity to take pictures for sure. But Mayor Mike Sullivan is with us. Mike, would you like to just say something that you remember about your term? And tell us something that will be funny or serious, it doesn't matter.
Unfortunately, I was the mayor when we received a package of information one day from the Sierra Club and the American Canoe Association. Which at first I thought was a complete joke, you know, because at that time I'd never heard of the American Canoe Association. But I took it to Bud's office and kinda walked in, like I say, I thought it was a joke. And we looked at that information and my real, my gut instinct, and thank goodness Bud talked me out of it. I wanted to write guts on the, or nuts on the front of it and send it back. If you know that's refer, reference to a battle during the Battle of Bulge where the American Colonel told that, that's what he told the Germans, the nuts, when they asked him to surrender. But Bud talked me out of that, thank goodness. And we entered into a quite lengthy negotiations with judges. And we had ended up in Frankfurt, going to different agencies down there trying to, you know, we made a plan to build a new water plant, but it took, you know, you can't do something like that overnight. But I just thank Bud for all the times that I rushed into his office with, you know, unannounced and kinda interrupted him, and he was always receptive to that. The biggest thing I think when I was the mayor, I, I, I wanted to stay off of the front page of the Lexington Herald Leader newspaper. Because if you're an elected official or a politician and you ended up on the front page of the Lexington paper, it usually was not good. And I thank Bud for keeping me off that paper.
The Sierra Club got you pretty close.
Well, that was, yeah.
Yeah, one of the great night players in my legal career.
I, I, I know. It turned into.
I mean, yours was that bad?
What?
Sierra Club.
I don't know. It's something I like to see.
It started with him and then I think it ended with the time before I came off.
Yeah, it certainly quite a while. When my term ended, it was still.
Still going on.
Oh, I, Mayor Preston was, it ended on Ted's turn.
Yeah. Bud, thank you so much.
We appreciate you.
Mike, say something you remember about Bud, your term as mayor.
Thank you, Harold. I'll never forget, we were, the city was at that time expanding our water lines out around Route thirty-two. And we were extending service to Gatesville Lake. And Mr. Mayor, as you well know, we had lots of contractors and people who were joining that workforce. I'll never forget sitting in the chair one night and we were having that discussion with the people laying the water lines. Bud was in his usual position over here at the table. And the gentleman made some comment about impenetrable rock and bottledness quicksand.
That's what I said.
And it was Bud Adams who said that term. Yes, it was. And I remember kinda looking at him and he looked at me and just kinda smiled to have to listen to what we heard about, I won't say excuses, but stories about people trying to get the work done. And Mike, Mayor Sullivan, like, like you, I lost track of the number of times that I would tear out and go head into Bud's office. And he never said, I'm too busy. He never said, I don't have time. He never said, come back later. He always said, come in, sit down, take a deep breath. Let's think about this before you make that phone call or you write that letter. And Bud, I just can't begin to tell you how much I appreciate that. There are two quotes that I'd like to share, if I may, if I can get my technology to work here real quick, that are found tonight, Bud, that, that I think exemplifies your service as mayor, if I may. John C. Maxwell is quoted as saying, "A good leader is a person who takes a little more than his share of the blame and a little less than his share of the credit." Bud never asked Harold if she noticed you on the front page. He always did his work very humbly, but yet very appropriately. A second quote, Bud, from Kentucky's own Abraham Lincoln, who said, "You cannot escape the responsibility of tomorrow by evading it today." Bud always took care of business. And for that, as mayor, I was eternally grateful. And I know the citizens of Louisiana, both then and now, continue to take that into account, Bud. And we appreciate your dedication and your years of service to the city of Louisiana. Thank you, Bud.
Bud Preston, you got anything you'd like to say about Bud? You being serious or funny, if you don't mind?
I'd like to say, Bud, that I served as mayor for twelve years. And me and Bud never had a difference in the world as I know of. I took water as a very small amount. But Bud was always a good friend of mine, and if I needed his help, like Mike Armstrong, I'd go up to his office and I'd ask him a question. He'd always have an answer for me. Remember when this water thing happened, Sierra Club sued us for, what, a billion dollars, Bud, something like that? And Bud worked night and day to solve that thing. And me and him made several trips to Prestonburg and Buckville and Fiddle Building. And we, it all worked out. And I worked with the fire department real close, and Tom Parsons was on, was on the council when I was mayor. And Tom Lachin was on the council when I was mayor, and I forget the rest of the others on the council. But anyhow, as mayor of Louisiana, Kentucky, a proud city that we live in, I appreciate Bud so very much for what he's done for us all. I mean, I'd go to his office every now and then, I wanted to, and he'd never turn me away. He'd never say, I'm sorry, I can't, I don't have time to talk to you. He'd always be willing to stand by and help me out and give me a hand if I needed one. So Bud, you're a good man, and you're a good, good city attorney, the best I ever saw in my life. And I appreciate what you've done for us, Bud. And you stood by me several, several times when I was a water fan. I'd call Bud up, Bud'd say, Mayor, where you at? I'd tell him whatever I needed. He'd say, okay, I'll, I'll help you out with it. So Bud always stood by me and helped me out and get, give me a good tip on what to do, what to say. And whatever it was, come in handy, it was always good for me to talk to Bud when I had trouble. And I had plenty of troubles, and Bud knows that. We had plenty of troubles all the years, and we're Kathy. And Kathy knows all about it too, and sort of Rita. But anyhow, we had a good time together. And I thank you, Bud, for being a good city attorney, the best I've ever seen in my life. Thank you, Bud. God bless you.
This is most unexpected, most kind, and most undeserved. And another thing I'm concerned about now, after all these kind words, are they gonna bring the hearse and take me off? I gotta top off these three mayors. And I don't wanna make light of the situation by no means, but I hadn't been mayor, but I believe, let's see, January till May. And I think I can top y'all because I didn't go running into Bud's office. But I had been mayor about four or five months, and we had a fatality related to a city incident. And they said, wait, Mayor, you need to come down. What are you gonna do next? I said, let's go Bud Adams' house. It was like eleven o'clock at night, eleven fifteen at night or something. Eddie took me, I said, take me up there. So we go knocking on Bud's door at eleven o'clock at night. And that's him. He's always been there for us citizens, for the city. And does it for very little pay. And I think that says a lot, that he's doing it for the right reason. He's not doing it by no means for the money. He's doing it because he loves the city and he wants to do well for the city. Beeper, you've been here as long, so you want to add something, you surely remember something funny or serious?
All I can say is over the years I've been here, I come here as a junior firefighter in December seventy-nine.
You've been here longer.
In just a little bit. But I have seen Bud over the years, had her rounds. He's a good attorney. He'll lead you the right direction. You may not like what he's telling, but he'll tell you the truth. And I appreciate you, Bud. Thank you.
You guys wanna come up and just get a picture of the mayor's, uh, not be a rare occasion here to get us all together? Bud, you get even more of that. We're not holding my mouth, we can surely get in.
You might hold a brick.
Close enough to get a picture. Jump in behind you, Kathy, you're all set. Well, Kathy, you got a lot, a lot of pictures there. All right. Hey, thank you guys so much for coming. I come all the way from Lake. To be here.
Take a good seat, again.
I come all the way from Maryland.
Yeah, thank you, traveling man.
I'm trying to work with this, Mayor. I'm done good.
Yeah, you're doing good, eh?
All right, while y'all got the cameras out.
Harold, before I leave, I want to say one thing.
Okay.
It's the duty of every mayor to buy at least one garbage truck.
Well, I bought two. One of these days, though, I wanna hear the story about all the police officers getting thrown in. You must have ended that before you come. Have a good seat tonight.
Good to you.
Yeah, he pointed to me when I said that.
You want a picture of that too?
Yeah, I need you with us. We give everybody a minute to socialize. Few council members would come up here.
Don't unfortunately vote, so we should lower those bags out. Where's Tom? Tom, get first.
Guys, a few weeks ago, I went to Ashland and was awarded this, actually Matt was there. Was awarded this, this was four hundred and two thousand dollars of free money that can be used to design and engineer. This is the entire engineering cost of a new sewer plant. And I thank Mike Armstrong and Mike Sullivan and Teddy Preston and Bud Adams with all, there's nothing more important to this city than a new sewer plant.
That's right.
And this is the foundation of it. This gets us started. This gets all the engineering and design done, the hard work. And I only need to find another nine and a half million. Like I think, like I think the county, the county had a part in this. Some of this money came to the county. And they were gracious to, to accept. I mean, it was earmarked for sewer. And of course, we do the sewer, but the county was on board with this being the most important project in the county is to try to get us a new sewer plant. So I thank the county and FiveCo, and we have Representative FiveCo here and, and the governor's office for doing this. Thank y'all. And I wanted to get a picture with the council members, because we didn't do it in Ashland.
No, but now get back in the seat with.
Bud, I don't know if I give you time to talk. Do you wanna say anything else? No, because I'm just overwhelmed. You know, it's very rare you got a lawyer who's lost awards.
Everybody just kept coming in and you just looking at your paperwork, and I don't even know if you realized it, like, oh. I figured when Robert came in, maybe that would give it away.
Yeah, that gave it away. He knew something was up there. She stayed out in the hall as long as she could. Chris, thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
We'll get this meeting over with, and we'll have some talking cookies for everybody to stay around. All right, on comments, I'd just like to say I wanted to thank my staff for trying to help get the Christmas decorations out. We get more and more every year, and that's just more and more work every year. I don't know what happened this year. It seemed to me like Thanksgiving was one weekend, Christmas was the next. I don't know what happened in between. We did get ninety-five percent of them up, and I thought town looked good. And unfortunately, the only thing harder than putting up Christmas decorations, taking down Christmas decorations. So that's what's on the store this week. But I do thank the city workers for doing that. That's about the only announcement I had other than this award for the sewer plant and Bud. So with that, on old business, I have a motion we approve minutes from November ninth, twenty twenty-one meeting.
Make a motion?
Motion by Mr. Call.
I'll say it.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Any discussion or corrections? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the Louisiana Utility Board has a vacancy. Mr. Preston stepped down sometime back. And it was also time for Jeff Kinzer to be reappointed. So with that, I would like to appoint Jeff Kinzer for another two-year term to the utility board. He works hard with us on the board. Been an asset. I give a motion we approve.
Damn motion.
Motion by Mr. Clancy.
I'll say it.
Seconded by Mr. Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And Mr. Neil Wilson, Bud, I didn't find out your exact answer, but I'll get it by tomorrow. But I'd like to appoint him, and if there's a problem, we'll back it off.
Okay.
But Mr. Neil Wilson, who worked for the power plant for a long time, he's pretty much an engineer, I reckon he is an engineer, has expressed interest in the board, and I would like to appoint Neil Wilson to the utility board. He would be serving a one-year term. Motion by Mr. Brown.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Call. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We recently passed new legislation or ordinance, I would say, to create a code enforcement board in Louisiana to deal locally in-house with some of the violations regarding nuisances and other code violations like fireworks, noise, animals, all that. And this board is gonna play an important part in, in, in our officer being able to bring those cases to this board. And so we can deal with it in-house, hopefully. So I needed a three-person board. I have chosen two, and I've reached out to a third one that I don't have an answer on yet. So I have two tonight. I'd like to appoint Greg Indacott. He's a resident in Louisiana, lives on the code enforcement board. They must be residents of the city. Utility board, they must be accustomed to. So on the code enforcement board, Mr. Greg Indacott lives at the end of Sullivan Street and River Avenue. I'd like to appoint him. I give a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Motion by Mr. Brown. Seconded by Ms. Call. All in favor?
Aye.
And second gentleman, this is gracious of me to step up and do this. It, it, it really, and I appreciate Mr. Larry Rife that came to be with us tonight. Would be the second member of the code enforcement board. He lives over on either Queen or Wheeler. I get it mixed up. Mr. Queen. And he has. Uh, and, uh, he has played the, took a proactive role in helping to clean up some of his end of town. Would like to be a part of the code enforcement, uh, board going forward. So I get a motion to appoint Mr. Roth?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Parsons. Second by Mr. McClanahan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, a couple items I wanted to add to the agenda at the last minute. Uh, due to us not having a meeting in December, we did not, uh, did not get to bring to you the question of whether we wanted to do COVID incentive pay again for city employees. Uh, the CARES Act money that we got, uh, was enough to cover that, and, uh, after looking at the numbers, we do have enough to do it again, but that's something I wanted to, it's not in the budget, so it would require a budget amendment, so I wanted to get your all approval and see if you wanted to do that, just like we did last year.
And what was that again, last year? The specifics around that? What, what were the specifics around it last year?
Uh, we give every city employee on the payroll, not elected officials, the city employees, uh, out of that CARES Act money that was for, like he wrote, paid, uh, three fifty.
I can't remember. I'd have to look.
Mentioned, made a motion. I'm pretty sure it's three fifty. And, uh, we taxed, we did tax it.
I believe it's three fifty.
Well, if you got enough, enough of a budget to carry it, boy, yeah, I thought we should go ahead and do it again this year.
We didn't meet in December, so I didn't do it. I just didn't even mention it till we had a meeting.
I'll make a motion, we go ahead.
Motion by Mr. Parsons. Second by Mr. Brown. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I will say, my guys did work. Guys and gals worked through COVID if they didn't have it. We had a lot, you know, that had to miss for either having it or in quarantine, your spouse or your kids had it. Other than that, they worked. So, uh, this would be the last year of the CARES Act money, so that would be the remnants of it, but, uh, with that being said, we will move forward with that. Uh, before I do council comments, I do have a visitor from FiveCo that brought on me at the, at the last. I'm on the, I was like, I'm on the executive board and I didn't even know this, so, but you must be brand new.
I'm, I'm new.
I know you're not new around town, but you're new because of the FiveCo appointment. You wanna introduce yourself?
Yes, Terry Branham Clark. I live in Catlin, so I'm part of the Branham's from Lawrence County. And just joined the FiveCo team, Economic Development, so you'll start seeing my face around here trying to learn and find out what, how we can be of assistance, so you know how to contact me and how to get ahold of me and.
Was you an addition or taken my place?
Uh, no, I think they just added me on. Yeah, I didn't kick, I didn't kick anybody out. No, I didn't kick anybody out.
And Ms. Clark was a sacred representative prior to.
Yeah, one hundredth district, which I think Lawrence County's now part of. We're all now the same district.
Yep, it'll be us now.
Yeah.
All right, so thank you for coming up to me. All right, now have any comments from, uh, council?
I'd like to, I'd like to say, uh, we appreciate Ted coming up here tonight.
Absolutely.
And, uh, I've worked with him several, several years ever he's in there.
Thank you.
We really appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, uh, mayor, once you come to the city.
Thank you, Tom.
Well, yours is a long time.
He may have had the longest, he's had the longest term in a long time, that's for sure. I don't know how long Teddy was here, or, I mean, not Teddy, Tooty.
Tooty.
Exactly. Maybe he was, had two or three terms, but I don't know if they were consecutive or not. Teddy had three consecutive terms?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Yeah, thank you for kinda, wanted to be sure you knew about it, and I kept trying to get word if he's gonna come or not. I even sent Greg to your house today to tell you, but, yeah.
We just wanted to make sure he knows that we appreciate you, working back.
Yep. Absolutely. Uh, all right, anything else from the council? Anything from the audience? I do have a real quick, five-minute executive session, and if we could do that, do you give us five minutes? We'll be back and we'll eat cookies and talk and yak or go home, whichever one we wanna do. Uh, do I have a motion we go into executive session to discuss the property acquisition?
Make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Callen. Second by Mr. McClanahan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll be right back.